Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. The prayer tonight is going to be given by Reverend Ethel Sampson.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Heavenly Father, as above, by before you in the precious name of Jesus, Heavenly Father, please make me worthy to call upon your holy and righteous name. Heavenly, thank you, Heavenly Father, for waking us up this morning in time and not into eternity. Heavenly Father, thank you for this golden opportunity. Father, I ask a blessing, Heavenly Father, for all those that are going to define my voice tonight, giving honor to God, Heavenly Father, with the ultimate finish of my faith, and may all these officials here tonight, Heavenly Father, be asked a special blessing upon them, oh God, that's touched them in a special way, Heavenly Father. And, Heavenly Father, as they proceed this evening, Heavenly Father, please let them do things that are decent and in order. And, Heavenly Father, we come before you begging for forgiveness for our many sins, Heavenly Father. And, Heavenly Father, if you have done anything wrong, Heavenly Father, if you forgive us right now, oh God, be asked a special blessing upon the nation, Heavenly Father. We thank you for the kindness, Heavenly Father. Oh God, we thank you, Heavenly Father, for letting us be able to listen to it on the Tuesday, fourth Tuesday, and the seventh Tuesday, Heavenly Father. We thank you so much, Heavenly Father. Oh God, we ask you, Heavenly Father, you touch these people's heart, Heavenly Father, if they come within, Heavenly Father, let them not be angry with each other, Heavenly Father, that everybody is finally getting ready to get a one or call, Heavenly Father. Oh God, it's best for straight now, Heavenly Father. We thank you now in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost, praise the Lord. Amen.
You would please stand, let's join, and pledge the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Thank you. Board, item number three, I need to ask you, if you would, please add, after we approve the agenda, the proclamation that we presented to the New Bern High School football team. And if we can get a motion to approve the agenda with that addition, I will read that for everyone's benefit. Second. Have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I think most of, or everyone here should have in front of you, the proclamation. I want to give staff some credit, Foster did a great job working together on very short notice on getting the parade put together this afternoon. For those that were in attendance, it was very well put together, so congratulations and thank you for that. And just prior to that, several of us joined the football team and the coaching staff and some of our counterparts with the county board to recognize the football team and fed them lunch, and it was a hungry group of boys, and they put a heart on it, trust me, because there was not a slice of cake left whenever we left that place. If you would, I'd like to just read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas on Friday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the New Bern High School Bears won the title of four A state football champions following a win against Greensburg's Grimsley High School Whirlies. And whereas the game played at Keenan Stadium in Chapel Hill ended in a score of forty to twenty-eight. And whereas since two thousand seven, the New Bern Bears have won four state championships. This is the first championship under the leadership of head coach Tori Nowell. And whereas the team's overall record for two thousand twenty-two is sixteen and oh, which is a great source of pride for the players, coaches, administrators, fans, families, students, alumni, and supporters of the Bears Athletics. And whereas total touchdowns for the season was one oh four, total points scored was seven twenty-one, the team averaged twelve points per game above their opponents, total yards rushed was six thousand four hundred and forty, and the ball was thrown five hundred and fifteen yards for a combined total of yards of six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five. The Bears gave up twenty-seven touchdowns to their opponents. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey T. Odom, Mayor of the City of New Bern, on behalf of the New Bern Board of Alderman, do hereby honor the accomplishments of the New Bern High School football team and proudly acknowledge the outstanding character displayed by the student athletes in winning the two thousand twenty-two four A state championship." So, congratulations again to the team, the coaches, and everyone involved. It was a tremendous feat. All right, item number four, request and petition of citizens. First one tonight is Jay Green of two hundred, Tassino Court.
Thank you. My name is Jay Green. I'm a proud resident of the City of New Bern for the past seven years via Mecklenburg County, Charlotte, North Carolina. And tonight just proves one of the things I love about this city and these people. But I've recently found something that is a little disturbing to me. There's not much I don't like about the City of New Bern, but I have recently learned that our employees are underpaid. I have an issue with that. I understand that we did a market survey, hired a consulting firm, and for some reason we have not brought it up to what the other municipalities. I am in a business that deals with, I deal with fifteen other municipalities in the area, so I know kind of what they make, and correct me if I'm wrong, if any of you guys know something I'm saying that's not, not true, but the reason that we love this place is because of the people sitting behind me, the majority of the people sitting behind me tonight. So, I want to thank most of them that are here for the service. I want to thank you guys for the service that you guys give, but I truly believe that whatever you have to do, whether it's raise taxes, I know nobody likes to talk about that, but the majority of the people that live in my neighborhood come from areas where this is a great place to live for taxes. And we don't mind paying a little more for the service that we're getting from these guys behind me. So, I just want to say, as a proud citizen of this city, that I do believe that our employees should be brought up to the market standard for pay, and I don't think we should continue to move on. I'm real surprised, the number one reason that most people leave is for more money. So, they obviously love this city as much as I do, but as a citizen, I want to just make it clear that I feel like we should pay our employees what they deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Deese of three ten, Mattamores Lane.
Good evening, Troy de Alderman, Mayor. My name is Jackie Deese, and I am the account services supervisor for the CAPS office, for the customer service. First, I would like to say thank you for our governor and board for their interest in the welfare of their employees. I am here tonight on behalf of my staff and myself to kindly request that you consider approving the consultant's full recommendation. CAPS Office is the face of the city. This is the first place that customers come in for services, and that's why we thrive for excellent customer service. So, as a supervisor, I am having difficulty recruiting qualified candidate to hire, and once we hire them, we start our extensive training process and give them classes. However, this customer service that we give them, they don't last for the customer, I'm sorry. It's been very difficult to retain our new staff at times due to the, due to the, well, let me hold on, let me count to ten, please. It's been difficult to hire and retain them because of the competing wages in different towns and cities. We don't want to see our services reduced because we don't have the necessary staff and skill sets to maintain the level of service that we have come to expect. I feel like it is necessary and seems unavoidable to keep up with the current inflation, so we don't fall too far behind with competitive wages, and which could take us back years to recover and replace the skills and staff. And for this, I thank you for listening and for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Foster could, I think this is a camera up here?
We've reached out to Swag, asked him to stop. All right, here, put a plug on it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're waiting on him to stop. All right, thank you.
All right, next is Ruth Cooper of ten twenty-two, Colleton Way.
Hi, I've been told I speak softly, can you hear me?
We can, very good.
Good, thank you. My husband, Dog, and I moved here from Cincinnati one year ago. We are very glad we did. Thank you all for the work that you do. Decades ago, as a pediatric nurse, I learned about fetal alcohol syndrome. Last year, shortly after moving to New Bern, I saw TV ads warning about fetal alcohol spectrum disorders, or FASDs, as they are now called. About the same time, there was a magazine article about how young women aren't concerned about drinking alcohol while they're pregnant. Then I read about the proposed social district in downtown New Bern. I was surprised and dismayed, why would we want to make it more desirable for people, possibly pregnant women, to drink more alcohol? A social district will benefit the pockets of local bars and restaurants, but no one else. Tourists, especially families, will not flock to New Bern because we have a social district. If a pregnant woman takes certain drugs, they will affect her fetus, and the baby might be born addicted to the drugs. This can usually be cured. Fetal alcohol spectrum disorders are permanent. Children born with one will not look, think, or act normally, ever, ever. Recently, one of the mass shooters tried to use his alleged FASD as a defense. Just a tiny bit more. Please think about the possible damage a social district might do to future children and those in their lives. Please do not approve a social district for New Bern at this time. And this is not about the social district, though. I love the traffic in New Bern, it's so much better than Cincinnati, or even Wilmington, where we considered moving. The only thing that bothers me is along Trent Road, I was driving today coming from the library with the sun in my face, and someone on a bike was riding right in my traffic lane toward me. I wish there was some way to put some kind of bike lanes or better shoulder or something all along Trent Road, because it's even going to the Y some mornings, I see people walking or biking in dark clothing right as I'm driving in that lane of traffic. I don't know if there's ever anything you can do, but I'm just concerned that, you know, one of the days I'm going to read that some pedestrian was killed on Trent Road because people just couldn't help to see them right in the, you know, traffic lane.
Thank you very much.
I have to go home, I have a dog on antibiotics and pain meds, so I'm leaving now.
Lucky dog. Madam Clerk, was that all the petition of citizens?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, what's the pleasure of the board?
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Second. Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Not, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion passes. Madam Clerk, do you have the presentation?
I do.
Okay, all right. If the board would allow me, I'm going to walk down to the front, and I know everybody's here for this special presentation tonight, just kidding. Mayor Outlaw, if you would, please join me at podium.
The mayor put me on the spot several times in eight years, so I'll reiterate. I asked him if he would come to the meeting, and he didn't ask me why, he didn't ask any questions, so I think everybody knows that this election cycle we went through was a little bit different. The timing was different, when we were sworn in was different, and it didn't allow us to really have the proper handoff. And, Mayor, this is a new tradition that the board has agreed we're going to start, and that is passing the gavel officially on to the outgoing mayor. So, I want to read, the council presented the standing out law recognition of your dedication and service to the City of New Bern, having served as mayor from twelve ten, two thousand thirteen through eight fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. You have certainly led the city through some difficult times, we have shared in some of those times together, and we're glad you're here tonight. I'm glad you're here, and I know you're glad you're here. So, I know you're a man of few words, but have you anything to share with the crowd tonight?
Well, I just, I really appreciate that somebody took the time to, you know, come out, so.
That's the second time he's ever used that gavel in his room.
He shouldn't have done that, I mean, because I, you know, I do thank you for this, and it was really a pleasure and honor to serve the City of New Bern, the staff, and particularly all the employees. It's great to see all you guys, and I thought you were so helpful in sixteen years, and a lot of times, I have to say, as an elected official, you know, we did clearly do a lot, and you deliver so much, and I thank each and every one of you, and if somebody's not here tonight, please come back and tell them how much I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, what each and every one of you do for the City of New Bern. And Jeffrey, you're doing a great job, and I'm just so honored and thrilled of how great a job you guys are doing, and how well I'm seeing you guys are all working together. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, thank you for your support and allowing us to do that, I think it was very appropriate. All right, item number ten, presentation of city employees of the year, Mr. Hughes.
Yes, sir, so, Mayor, last week, we had our, our first annual city employee holiday luncheon for our employees. We had a great attendance at the West New Bern Recreation Center, and we implemented our city employee of the year program. And so, we have three employees that we recognize, and they are public safety, which comprises the fire, rescue, and police departments; public service, which includes administration, development services, finance, human resources, IT, and Parks and Recreation; and public utilities, public works, and that includes the electric utility, water resources, and public works. So, department heads and supervisors made recommendations on folks in their departments, on who they thought would be a good candidate for employees of the year. I created a team consisting of department heads, myself, the assistant city manager, the human resources director, and we worked to determine who those employees would be. So, we, we informed those folks last week who they would be, and hopefully all of them are here tonight. And so, I'm going to move over here to this other side, I'm going to read some things about them, and then, and then, let's see here, he's telling me to cut this off. Okay, can you hear me? And then, we're going to present them with a plaque and a three hundred dollar check for their service, so stand by. Okay, for public safety, this employee is a highly respected member of the department and community. As part of their job, they interact with the majority of city departments on a regular basis. This employee often exceeds expectations by completing assignments ahead of schedule. This employee frequently steps up to volunteer for additional duties. Normally, when there is a citywide special event, they are working. This employee is dedicated, dependable, and during the course of their employment with the city has remained upbeat, motivated, and smiling during their twenty-three-year career. I'm pleased to announce the two thousand twenty-two employee of the year for public safety, Police Sergeant Monaco Hargan. And here's the check, which I know you're going to lie, and then here's your plaque. Let's get a picture with the chief. Thank you so much, and congratulations. All right, our next category is for public service. This employee is extremely effective in their role, which requires interpersonal skills, empathy, and understanding. They display initiative and tremendous multitasking abilities and organizational skills. The employee goes above and beyond the normal job duties on a daily basis to meet the needs of our employees. This employee displays an outstanding public image and represents the city in a positive manner in their interactions with employees and the public. The employee displays professionalism, patience, and sincere compassion when dealing with others. Every employee in the city deals with this person at one time or another. This employee has been with the city since two thousand eighteen. I'm pleased to announce the two thousand twenty-two employee of the year for public service, Human Resources Technician Cynthia Mayer.
Foster, he, turn to your right, we got another photo op.
And for our Public Utilities, Public Works employee of the year, as the city's infrastructure continues to grow, this employee has taken an active leadership role in their department by helping to keep pace with the North Carolina ZOT Highway seventy project, and MetroNet project, and other ongoing development projects. This employee's implementation of new processes and procedures has allowed the work to, the work volume to increase by over three hundred percent. This employee has worked to establish effective relationships with the local construction industry and deals with citizens on a daily basis who inquire about the what and the why they do. This employee has been with the city since two thousand sixteen and represents the city in an extremely positive manner. I'm pleased to announce the two thousand twenty-two employee of the year for Public Utilities, Public Works, Utility Lot Tech Coordinator Ryan Young.
Yes, ma'am.
I really wanted to have the three employees come to the front so that we, as a board, can shake their hands and take a picture with them.
Absolutely, we could true do that.
If the boy wants to do that, I think that would be most appropriate.
If they're still here.
Yeah, I'm sure they are, we can get them, we can get them back in.
Item number eleven, Mr. Hughes, recognition of the two thousand twenty-two Citizens Police Academy.
I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher to come up and make this presentation.
So, the New Bern Police Department is thrilled to honor and recognize those that have completed our Citizens Police Academy. This was organized, managed, and in large part is the, as a result of the efforts of the man standing to the right of me, Sergeant Bryce. So, I would let Sergeant Bryce conclude the, our presentation to our new graduate. Sergeant Bryce?
Mayor Odom, board, thank you for allowing us to be here. Standing behind me are several very enthusiastic and supportive individuals. Not only are they supportive of the police department, but they're supporters of the City of New Bern. Since beginning the class in September, I have seen them at several community events, to include Mom Fest and others. It's quite a, quite an honor to walk down the streets in, in uniform or out of uniform, and they'll, they'll call me down across the street, hey, how, how you doing, what's going on? So, they're very supportive of what we're doing here in the City of New Bern. Citizens Police Academy is a ten-week police academy where we become very transparent as much as we can as to what the police department does. They were introduced to our services division, our investigations division, our operations division. We took a field trip out to Craven County Courthouse, we spoke with District Attorney Scott Thomas. So, we've done a lot of fun things, a lot of hands-on things, and this is a great crowd of people behind me, and I'm really excited to introduce them to you. But right now, we have our class president, Linda Grazek, she has a few words she'd like to say, and then I'll present some certificates.
Good evening, Mayor Odom and members of the Board of Alderman. My name is Linda Grazek, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I recently completed the twenty-fifth session of the New Bern Citizen Police Academy on November thirtieth, along with fourteen of my fellow New Bernians. Many of us have been residents of New Bern for less than five years, after living most of our lives somewhere else. This class was an excellent opportunity to receive an in-depth view of the New Bern Police Department. Chief Patrick Gallagher, who's also a newcomer to New Bern, opened the first of our ten sessions with an overview of the police department, its mission statement, and the city's commitment to the values and ideals of community policing. With over thirty-one years of experience in law enforcement, Chief Gallagher is keenly aware that citizen involvement with the police is a critical element of crime prevention and public safety. He provided valuable information on the department's current programs and future goals to strengthen this concept. Subsequent class sessions introduced us to the function and operation of the various specialized administrative units within the police department, as well as the partnership with the Craven County Sheriff's Department and local courts. In the interest of time, I'm unable to go over each of them tonight, but I did provide a more extensive overview of our ten-week experience for you to, to read. I polled my classmates for their thoughts on the Citizen Police Academy as a whole. Here are a few of their responses. The class was extremely valuable and highly recommended. This course was far more than I was expecting. What surprised me was how much formal education many officers have, including advanced college degrees. Each of the presenters taught me something or made me think about aspects of police work that I knew nothing about. An enormous amount of planning went into this ten-week course, who would not have been successful without the organized presence of Sergeant Kevin Bryce. Sergeant Bryce was always available to answer questions and communicated weekly with us. He kept the evening's events moving along and on time. He shatter owned our off-campus trips like a pro, and with his crowd control experience, he made sure none of us wandered off unsupervised at the courthouse or the county jail. He was quick to provide clarification and ancillary information when needed, and he always had an interesting story or anecdote to share. We formally recognized his efforts at our last class together, but we also wanted to publicly honor him here tonight and express once again... publicly honor him here tonight and express once again our heartfelt appreciation. We would also like to thank Chief Gallagher and all the uniformed and civilian men and women of the New Bern Police Department, the Craven County Sheriff's Department, the District Attorney's Office, and the many, many others I am forgetting, for giving us their personal time to tell us what they do, answer our many questions, and connect it with the goals of community policing. Their knowledge, dedication, professionalism, enthusiasm for their work was on constant display during our time together. We have a newfound respect and understanding of all the challenges they face in keeping the citizens of New Bern safe, and we hope to support and assist them in the future in any way that we can. In closing, we ask our city leaders for their continued support of the academy and to the uniformed police officers and civilians who make New Bern the wonderful city we've all come to appreciate. Thank you for your time.
At this time, I'd like to present certificates and also have a class picture for each one of them. So we're looking forward to handing that out. And last but not least, Jack Hopper. Again, this is a great group of individuals behind me, very supportive of the city. I've said that numerous times, but I can't stress it enough. This is our twenty-fifth session of Citizen Police Academy. Last thing I will say that since COVID, this is the first class we've had. We're looking forward to starting one again in the winter-spring session 2023. So you'll see information coming up with that. But thank you all. I've enjoyed meeting, getting to know all of you, and look forward to seeing you out and around in the city. Thank you.
And thank you Sergeant Bryce and Chief Gallagher. All right, item number twelve, we've got a presentation by the Craven County Alcoholic Beverage Control Board.
At this time, I'd like to ask Chip Shagman to come up and make his presentation.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Board, it's certainly interesting to see all these fine citizens of yours. You can see why New Bern is the center of eastern North Carolina. Yes, I am Chip Shagman. I am your Craven County ABC Board Chairman. Along with me this evening, I have Amy Morris, one of our board members, and our General Manager Paul Brown. On the board is our mission statement. It's everything that we do in the Craven County ABC Board has to be wrapped around the statement that you see, the investments that we put forth and the effort that we put forth, placed into that mission statement. Some of the board members, you may, may see some familiar faces up there. Kenny Booker, who's also on the Board of Commissioners, is also on our board. It's very interesting to have a Board of Commissioner on your, on your board. And then we have Carol Creighton and Kathleen Cook. Kenny is also here, myself, of course. There is one change up here. We just signed in the last few days, an agreement with Chip Hughes and the Sheriff's Department of Craven County to take over our total law enforcement. Right at present, they, they have the security detail. Now they're going to be doing past, past duties of ALE. So you'll be seeing them walking around in the liquor-by-the-drink facilities as we go forward. Another person that was up there is Melanie Ray. Most people in this room assuming this board know Melanie. She has moved from Board of Elections to our office, that's the Chief Financial Office. That's what she did in Leeuwen County, by the way, before she came to Craven. Moving along, excuse me. You know, one of the things that we did, we had three things this year that we wanted to, we had three things, major factors that we wanted to do this year. One was have the groundbreaking of our new building, five point three million dollars over in Bridston. That has gone off. Happy to say that as we have moved on from our groundbreaking, we're at about twenty-eight to thirty percent completion on that job. And we're looking forward to a, one August grand opening. It's a complex and one side will be the store and on the other side will be our new warehouse. And that, when we vacate our warehouse, that will go to the county of Craven to replace the warehouse they have in Vanceboro that's in very poor shape, and we will be conveying that to them. The second thing that we've done, which is interesting, of interest to this board course, is that we completed our downtown project. That was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we invested in that historic building. We wanted to make it, roll it back as much as we've put to nineteen thirty-five. I think we've done a good job on that. As you know, it had a front structural problem and nearly came down on Front Street. We managed to have that repaired with new girders and fixed up the inside and it's, we had our grand opening. And then the third thing that we've done is we opened up an additional store that it takes care of liquor-by-the-drink, which is the, which we term for the folks who have bars, grills, restaurants that serve spirits. So we, we have a store for them now and a warehouse, and we now have them come to the stores and pick up stuff, we deliver to them. So we've moved on with, with that and that's increased some of the sales, certainly. We did have our challenges, like you, you did with the COVID at one time. On a normal given day, the Craven County ABC Board will have for sale somewhere around a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand bottles between all of our stores. And due to COVID, we were down to about thirty percent, thirty-four percent of that at one time. So we had yards of space in our stores. Well, that's turned around and we are now at somewhere around ninety-nine percent fill. We have a few shortages in the Scotch and some of the bourbon still, but in large we're all right. So we've, we've moved on from that. So what are our, what are our goals this year? We're expecting to increase our sales by three percent. We're actually doing better than that. I, we, at the beginning of the year, we went to the federal government, looked at their economic view of tourism, and we judge it a lot, a lot on that. And we're about now, we have somewhere around nine to ten percent over last year, which was a very successful year. And so we're looking, you can see the figure that we have there. The other, the other outfits that we're, we're looking at is the security. We're upgrading our security, new cameras and new, new system called FLOCK, which we're putting it on property that we own. And it will take a look at folks coming into the property with their driver's licenses, information if they have a warrant for their arrest underneath that driver's license. About seven seconds, it will flash on the board of Chip Hughes, State Police and ALE. We've had a couple of arrest folks that have come to ABC stores and their warrants flashed up there, some of them serious sort of people. So we have this year a new program of, an internship for our management team, and we had our first graduates from that. We've increased the pay of our folks. The average rate now, the average employee is about sixteen to seventeen dollars an hour. And we still offer Blue Cross Blue Shield to our full-time people at no cost. So that's worth several dollars an hour as well. So there we are on that. One of the things that we're doing this year is we're, the state, the state has passed a law that requires us to give seven percent of the money that we take in specifically earmarked for prevention of underage drinking or drugs. We have taken that money and we have also applied, and there's other parts of the statute that allow us to pay for certain county anti-alcohol programs such as the clinic that is down in Oslo County. We, we put about a hundred and forty thousand dollars to assist the county on that. In the school system, we supply the deer program. We, we fund that for all of the schools. And that's been very helpful. We also help out the Boys and Girls Club also with a grant for underage, prevention of underage drinking. So how are we doing? If you're in business, you'd like to see a chart like this. We, about eight years ago, we were doing six point two, six point three million dollars. Now we're up to, you know, just a touch and you need sixteen million. Folks ask me if we sell in Craven County an abundance of alcohol. Well, the, the answer is, people in Craven County have a good taste for middle and upper shelf alcohol. Our friends over in Greenville, close to the college, they tend to have, drink a lot of aristocrat. And I noticed that you smiled on that, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you did not do that when you were going to school, but others did. At, at four dollars a bottle versus the, the stuff that we sell at pretty high. I'm here to tell you that one of the most expensive bottles in the world is a cognac. It's a twenty-five-year-old cognac, literally the thirteenth. The bottle itself that it comes in is about six hundred dollars. The cognac retails for four thousand dollars for one bottle, and yes, we've sold that in Craven County. We routinely sell bottles of alcohol at eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars in, in Craven County. Now, but we do not sell as compared to a lot of the other counties, a lot of units of alcohol as compared to, there's, there's some news there for you. Now what does that do? We call the tail of the bottle, I kind, I've kind of given away because I know right away that some of your eyes have dropped down to what the city of New Bern is, is about to get as part of the, the dividend. And each citizen gets part of this dividend. The Craven County ABC Board operates on no tax base. We have not done, accepted one penny of taxes since nineteen thirty-five. This has not cost any citizens in Craven to operate these stores or pay for our people one penny. It's all self-done by the, self-funded by the, the people who buy the alcohol. So the numbers that you see, the biggest winner, of course, is the state of North Carolina. They get, we all checks out for three point three million dollars for excise tax. And then the next one is the county, and you can see there's three, three checks that the county gets, and if you had those up quickly, it'd come up to about one point four million dollars. That's how much we gave Craven County this year. And, and, and Pavlock got some, and little Vanceboro got some, and yep, city of New Bern is going to get a, a check here. So without further ado, sir, if I may pass this on to your finance minister.
Give it to her. Don't, don't give it to me. Nothing I can do with it.
Seventy-six, eight fifty-nine. There you go, man. And we also passed on the, the audit, how we arrived with that, that money. And once again, Craven County did very, very well in the audit. We get in the top four percent of North Carolina. And as, I'll end on a note from the North Carolina ABC Commissioner himself, Hank Bauer, who said that without a doubt in his mind, of the hundred and sixty-seven boards in North Carolina, the Craven County has the best-looking, best-run, it's got nothing to do with me, ABC system that, that he leads. So that's pretty good company because we have Micklenburg that has twenty-six stores and Raleigh have twenty-eight, and us with our little six stores to be up there in the ratified air. So we're pleased and we're happy to work on that for all of you citizens. I appreciate all of you. Thank you, sir.
Board, anybody have questions for Mr. Shagian, wanting to hear?
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Now what we, what everybody has been waiting for, our annual audit presentation, number thirteen. This is the presentation of the annual CAFER and physical year for June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
I would like to ask Alan Thompson with Thompson Price, Scott Adams accompanying to make that presentation.
Thank you very much. And I know everyone is here for this. I appreciate that so much. It is always difficult to follow great accomplishments of staff and, and sports teams, et cetera. But we are very grateful that you allow us to perform the audit for the city. Couple of things I need to tell you to start with, you do hire us, the main thing is to issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issued an unmodified report, which is quote, clean report. There were a couple of findings, but overall a very clean report and a very good financial report. If you were kind enough to flip over on the presentation summary on page one, I'm going to go through a couple of things and then we'll get to the numbers. No significant audit findings on page one, on page two, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. No uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did revise for the representation letter dated November seventh, want to wear the management consol of the outside account, et cetera. The two small findings, I'll deal with at the very end of this, of the presentation. And then if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page four, and let's look at the numbers that we made. What we attempt to do here is to pull out some of the key numbers in the audit report, not saying these are all the key numbers, and put it in the first column here. And then just to the right, you'll see the four prior year's audit numbers so that you get a feel for trend information, not just looking at a number without some context, if you will. Total fund balance and general fund is twenty-six million, four seventy-three. If you go back to eighteen, that number is nineteen million, five seventy-one, so a nice trend line up. Unavailable fund balance is twelve million and forty-four thousand. Restricted and assigned is twelve million, three thirty-four. Total general fund expenditures, including transfers out, is thirty-six million, one eighty-nine. Fund balance available as a percentage of general fund expenditures is thirty-nine point eight seven. Unassigned fund balance is thirteen million, four ninety-nine. Unassigned fund balance basically is total fund balance, less restricted and non-spendable. Non-spendable being the inventory is prepaid. Restricted is basically receivables, which could be. Restricted is basically receivables, which could be from sales tax or due-to's and due-from's from other funds. Unassigned fund balance as a percentage is 37.3. Unassigned, if you take out the FEMA Florence fund balance, is 52.1. And then the revenues, over and under expenses before contributions, transfers in the general fund is a positive 208, 208,000. Electric fund is 2.3 million. The water fund is 2,683,000. Sewer fund is 1,582,000. These next three, I'm not going to read all these numbers. Cash and accumulated appreciation for electric fund, water fund and sewer fund. Because we're, I want you to know the numbers, but you're really focused on cash flow and proprietary funds and not necessarily in terms of total fund balance like you would in general fund. Cash versus fund balance, you can see total fund, or total cash in general fund is 18,820,000. Electric fund is 18,579,000. The water fund is 14,400,000. Sewer fund is 7,125,000. The ARPA money is 6.7 million. And then the other governmentals is 2.1 million. You see the fund balance again in general fund, same as the top, 26,473,000. The electric fund at 54,418,000. The water fund at 45,005,000. Sewer fund 68,005,000. And FEMA is a negative 1.4 million. And other governmentals is 1.5 million. I'll say this one more time, make sure I get it right. The other governmentals is really based on grants, et cetera, and can ebb and flow. Really has, depending on where those projects are in terms of grants, et cetera. So don't get excited up or down on that. It's just the status of the project. The proprietary funds, what you're really looking for is cash flow. And the general funds, the fund balance is strong. We'll look at some charts here in just a moment. The next line, you see property tax rates, collection percentage 99.15, which is awesome. Total property valuation there at 3,013,120,000. And then levy amount 16,006,000. Then you see the debt at 9.4 for governmentals and the business activities is 21.3 million. I will say this, just from a health standpoint, if you go up to the top, you look at fund balance, you see a nice trend. You go to the very bottom, you see business type activities and you see your debt going down. That's always a good thing. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five. I'm not going to read all those numbers, but you can see basically general fund revenues and expenditures by department, by each of the year, so you can see what that looks like. On page six, at the top, you see your total fund balance in blue. You're restricted and signed in red. You have a nice trend. Obviously, 22 year in is the highest. And then on the bottom, you see your fund balance and the group weighted average. You can see after the hurricane, the nice bump back. And then on page seven, same thing as two there, we had the nice bump back. Fund balance as a percentage of unassigned fund balance as a percentage. And then on the bottom, you see revenues over and under expenses before transfers, with 19 and 22 being the only year where all four funds shown are positive. On page eight, you see the top pie charts for cash balances and fund balances. There with the respective numbers underneath that. Total cash balance is at 58,929,000. And total fund balance is 195,000,000. And again, I know I'm repeating myself, but the fund balances there, because you have the fixed assets and your proprietary funds, looks like a huge number. But what you're really looking for is cash flow there. The fixed assets there, unless you would decide to sell them, don't have a whole lot of value in terms of are you going to spend it or not? You're really looking to provide a service to the citizens. On the bottom, you see your property tax rate compared to the group weighted average, which looks right in line. On page nine, you see your collection percentage compared to the group weighted average and the statewide average. I will say this going forward. LGC made a decision to lump group weighted average so it won't be near as helpful going forward to all those municipalities, counties, towns, et cetera, where you may have a group, to over 100 million budgeted and under 100 million budgeted. So it widens the group weighted average of the groups so large. I'm not sure it has a whole lot of value in terms of comparisons. And on the bottom, you see a breakdown of your general fund revenue with 49.47 coming from your ad louran taxes and intergovernmental making up most of the rest, which is where most of your sales taxes at. And then on page 10, you see the biggest item there, your public safety at 55.47%. And then the two findings here listed in the past, you know, on the board for a while, you've noticed that the LGC may send you a letter. They stopped doing that for the 63021 year. And so this basically serves as their letter of comments to the board. And the budget item here mentioned has to do with the Gatsby 87. Almost, I won't say all, but the majority by far of all our units. And as a firm, we do somewhere between 140 and 150, and I don't remember governmental law that's had a Gatsby 87 finding. So it deals with leases to town has to and from it, other entities. When we were in the audit committee, I did discuss my feelings on that, which I don't know that has a ton of value, but it is a standard that has to be addressed. The other standard or finding had to do with negative fund balances, which can be corrected fairly easy. It has, most of those are related to projects and just transfers will fix most of those fairly easily. I did enjoy meeting most, several of you in the audit committee and the couple of meetings we had. Appreciate your involvement there. As I told them, I'm always happy to answer any questions you have, not just tonight, but anytime you have a question, you go through the audit report. Call the office if you've got a question. If I'm not there, feel free to ask for my cell number and track me down and I'll get you an answer to your question. Thank you for allowing us to do the audit and we appreciate the helping of the staff. They were wonderful.
Does the board have questions? Mr. Hughes, do we need to take any action or is this just for presentation purposes?
This is for presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Okay. Number 14, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting revisions to the land use ordinance. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor would like to ask the city attorney to discuss this item.
Mayor, members of the boards, a number of months ago, the city, you guys who were here on the prior board, adopted a comprehensive land use plan required by a new update to chapter 160A called 160D. That put the city in a position to update its land use ordinances consistent with that new statute. The ordinance you have before you incorporates all of the statutory requirements that local governments must have in their land use ordinances. As we went through our land use ordinance, we made all the revisions that the statute requires. While doing that, also noticed some cleanup issues, just references to obsolete statutes, typos, whatever. So a few of the changes you'll see are simply clerical corrections, but 99% of those revisions are required by statute. The vast majority are procedural. They don't change any of our land use rules. We're not changing setbacks, zones, densities, heights. We are not changing anything in terms of design standards. We are simply addressing the procedural requirements that the new statutes require, such as how one goes about conducting quasi-judicial hearings, how we go about labeling our subdivision ordinances, all in an effort to create uniformity across the state so people in my business and developers can talk the same talk as they develop across the state of North Carolina. Up until chapter 160D, most cities had their own unique flavor of land use language. And now across the state, it will now be uniform. So that is what you'll have before you. The public hearing will address those issues. Any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions, board, before we open the public hearing? All right. At this time, I will open a public hearing with regards to the revisions to the land use ordinance. Anyone from the public would like to speak in favor or in opposition, please come to the microphone at this time.
Mayor, since no one's coming forth, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. A motion and a second, close the public hearing and discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Now we're looking for ordinance, to adopt the ordinance for the land use changes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance to provide for the revisions to the land use ordinance.
Second motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call on this one, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Freel?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 15, appointment of a mayor pro tem. And we will administrate the oath just for the public's benefit at each December meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. It's in our rules and procedure in our charter that the board choose a mayor pro tem to serve in the case that I cannot. So that is the item number 15.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. How's it done? Is this a nomination?
A motion, yes, sir.
Motion that we appoint Bob Brinson as mayor pro tem.
Second.
I have a motion of second to nominate Alderman Bob Brinson as mayor pro tem. Any discussion?
Bob, would you like to take on this position?
I wasn't given him that option. Yes.
Do we need a roll call vote on that or is voice vote fine?
Voice is fine.
Okay. All those in favor of Alderman Brinson serving as mayor pro tem, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, sir. I think the clerk will administrate the oath for you.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States so help you God?
I do.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as mayor pro tem so help you God?
I do.
Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities so help you God?
I do.
All right. Now what we've all been waiting for. Item number 16 is consider adopting a resolution to amend the classification pay plan for fiscal year 2223 as part of the market analysis pay study. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, Alderman, the Piedmont Tryout Council of Governments recently completed a market pay study for the city. This study represents a comprehensive review and analysis of the city's current position, classification system and pay plan, and compares it to specific local government entities. And those entities included Clayton, Goldsboro, Greenville, Havelock, Jacksonville, Kinston, Morehead City, Rocky Mount, Statesville, Wake Forest, Washington, Wilmington, Wilson, Craven County, Pitt County and the Greenville Utilities Commission. The consultants studied our position classifications to determine correct placement within that classification pay plan. And in the classification plan, there are 203 position titles. And those position titles are like police officer, recreation program coordinator, things like that, the titles. So 203 position titles. And as of today, that represents 460 employees. Fifty-five of those position titles are recommended to advance one pay grade and that affects 80 employees. 122 of those position titles are recommended to advance two pay grades and that affects 261 employees. And 24 of those position titles are recommended to advance three pay grades and that affects 117 employees. Two position titles are recommended to decrease one pay grade and that affects two employees. The city of New Bern implementation recommendations are to fund the full market study. This would cost $3.5 million. And so we recommend implementing this as a two-step process. The first step would be basically a 66% implementation. And that would be in effect beginning with the December 25th pay period with a check date of January 13th, 2023. And what that would include is a one-grade advance of 3% annual salary increase and that would affect 80 employees. The two-grade advance would be a 6% annual salary increase. That would affect 261 employees. The three-grade advance would be a 10% annual salary increase. That would affect 117 employees. Employees who are assigned to a position that would decrease by one grade would receive a 1% bonus. The total implementation cost is approximately $1.15 million for six months, ending June 30th of 2022. For an annual, for one year to fund the 66%, that would be $2.3 million. The proposed funding would come from fund balance from the general and enterprise funds. Step two would look at funding the balance during the FY 2324 budget process. We're happy to address any questions or concerns the board may have.
Board?
Yeah. Foster, let me ask you a couple of questions if you don't mind. First, how much is that out of the enterprise fund? That $3.5 million for full implementation, how much of it comes from the enterprise fund? Do you know?
Kim Ofer can answer that.
For full implementation?
And while she's looking that up, let me ask you another question. You're talking about implementing the percentages that you just spoke of at the end of December's pay period.
That's correct.
And then the other portion of it would be implemented when?
We would address that during the FY budget. As we go through that budget, which will start right at the first of the year. And the goal would be to implement that around July or December, just depending on how the budget process goes, which the board will be included on.
Okay. Well, as you know, I'm full, I am, I want full implementation. We've had, we've had employees, after employees that we bring in, we train, and then they leave to go somewhere else for more money. I mean, I was, I can tell you of a particular employee that's a friend of mine that worked for the electric department. He came in with zero experience. Three years later, he leaves us as a first-class lineman and is working with a contractor now. My position is, how much money do you think the city of New Bern spent to train him and to buy his equipment? And same with police officers. How much do you think the city of New Bern, you know, spends to train a police officer only for them to receive their training and certifications and to leave? Same with all the other employees. I mean, we've got employees that are, that are here for, to receive all their training and certifications just to find a stepping stone out. And I know you understand this, we've had this conversation. So I can get on board because of budget reasons only that we do the December 25th or 26th. or twenty-sixth, whenever the pay period begins portion, but I'd like to see a date, or hear a date as to when the second portion would become effective. And I'd like to see that date be July first. And I'm not, I'm looking at you. I've talked, I've talked with the board members, you know, um, let's let the city manager do his job, you know, to find a way of, uh, paying for it. If we don't pay our employees what they're worth, then they're just going to continue using us as a stepping stone. You know, I've said this a hundred times. How many of you are home sitting in your bed during a hurricane or a snowstorm, and these guys are out in someone's backyard climbing a utility pole, putting their fingers on, I don't know, twenty-two thousand volts at three o'clock in the morning? Or how many police officers have been chased, or, or chased a criminal? They, they don't know if they're going to turn around and shoot at them or not? How many firefighters, you know, go into a, a building that's fully involved in fire to, to save property, lives and properties? And, and look at Union Point Park. I mean, you've got to thank your recreation department for all that hard work, and most of that is built in-house. You know, so we have some talented people here, but we, by God, we need to pay them. Again, I'm looking at you, but I'm not, I'm, I'm discussing it, I'm, I'm discussing this with the board.
Trust me, everybody in this room is looking at him right now. Foster, could you, um, could you explain maybe the, a little bit more detail about the changing of grades? Because I think if I recall, I'm sure Sonya's here somewhere, um, I think if I recall, the last time we did this, we didn't change the grades. We just made adjustments to salaries, and that's one of the problems we have now?
That has occurred over time. Traditionally, when we would do a, um, a COLA, and, and really, the COLAs remained really flat for years, one, one-point-two, one-point-three, one-point-four percent, until twenty-twenty-one, when inflation hit, and then, then we saw seven-point-eight percent, and then this year were eight, eight-plus percent. And that's what really changed, changed things. But we did not upgrade our classification plan along the way, and that's what has kind of gotten us in the position we're in. And then, and we are under market compared to, to the, the cities and counties that we did the study against.
So, with that being said, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but if someone is at a salary, let's pick a number, fifty thousand dollars, and they're at a grade seventeen, and they're supposed to move up to a grade twenty, based on this recommendation. If by moving their fifty thousand dollar salary up the ten percent that's recommended, if that is somehow below the minimum for their new grade, they're brought up to the minimum, even if it's more than ten percent. Is that what I understand?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that, that happens to, we've got the number, uh, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what it is. That has, does affect several employees, yes.
So, I, I wanted to just be clear on that, that there's, you know, the, the recommendations of the three, six, and ten are sort of the baseline, but it's all going to be depending on the employee's salary and where they fall on the scale, depending on what they actually get.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, Foster, has this, so did HR or you or compare, um, your figures with this consultant company, and each, each job classification description was actually viewed and looked at for the salaries concern for each employee?
That's, that's correct. And what we did when we started this process, and this process really started in the spring of this year, we asked the department heads to review the job descriptions, make up updates on those before we sent those in. And then, the department heads did do a good job of vetting through that to make sure that, that the employees are doing, performing the jobs in those job descriptions. And so, the consultant reviewed our job descriptions, compared those with other job descriptions from the comparable cities.
Okay.
Came with the recommendations that we did.
You know, I, this salary study, and I know it's a very comprehensive study, and it, and it's, we had to get a consultant to actually administer it, but, you know, when, and we have to have a comparison ratio, I mean, and we use our benchmark cities. But did you take into consideration, I mean, because there's a lot of, of determining factors involved with a particular job duty of, I'm gonna pick on, see, maybe city clerk, I'm just gonna pick on you, Brenda, city clerk, for instance. We know what she do as a, as a city clerk. We know how demanding her job is, and we know that she puts a lot of time into her job. So, seeing another benchmark city, their city clerk may not have the same job description and put them, all that time involved. Was that a contributing factor that y'all looked into?
That was not a contributing factor. And that, that's really hard to do that, because then you're looking at the employee itself. And we may have, and let's, let's talk about a police officer. We may have a, a police officer, one, two police officer ones. One may, one may be going above and beyond on everything they do, and one may be just an, an average employee. And so, it's, it's hard to look at that. You've got to look at the, at the, at the job description itself.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And this is when merit comes into play. And so, as part of our evaluation that we do on an annual basis, that's when we, we reward those employees with the merit increases that we do. And we've been fortunate to be able to do that over the last four years now with merit pay.
And the reason why I said that is because I just say, our city clerk and, and our public information officers, they attend a lot of board meetings that go beyond the normal work hours.
That's right.
So, you know, I just think that that should, that should be a determining factor, and therefore, as I'm concerned, I don't know how the other board members feel, but we got to look at the job that employees do and the time that they put into that, to actually doing that job.
And Alderman, you know, I, I talk a lot about our employees, and we have a lot of assets in the City of New Bern, and, and I have a, it's really a cheat sheet that I go by, and I think you were at that meeting when I talked about it. The city has a lot of buildings, a lot of roads, a lot of electric utility infrastructure, a lot of water sewer infrastructure, but our number-one asset are our employees. Without our employees, we can't operate all of these things. And, and so, it's very important that we look after our employees and take care of them to the best of our ability. Uh, and, and this is a tough time right now. I mean, we're, we're having to compete with other municipalities who are going through the same thing that we are. Once this is adopted, we've got other cities and counties that are going to be looking at what we're doing, and they're going to be going through the same process, and it's probably going to continue for a while.
Well, I wish that we could give all of our employees a ten percent raise, but we know that that's due to the economy and budgetary strains.
That's fine, giving somebody a ten percent raise, but what happens is the salary survey says he needs twenty percent.
Exactly. What I'm just saying, we're giving out, you know, three, six, and ten.
Yeah. I'm, I, I mean, first, Kim, did you find that information?
Yep. So, for full implementation, enterprise funds would be, um, just over one-point-two million.
For full implementation?
Mm.
Okay.
For the annual salaries.
So, that brings it down to, what, two-point-two million or something like that?
Two-point-four.
Two-point-four million. Okay. Well?
So, based on what you were saying, again, is this, is there constraints or restraints with the budget that we could not do the full implementation? I believe that's what Alderman Astor was asking.
So, we're coming into our, our, our new budget process, and so, there are a lot of unknowns. We're, obviously, we're getting ready to go through the tax revaluation. We don't know what that's going to be until February of this year, and so, there are just a lot of unknowns. We are still dealing with inflation. Um, there are a lot of capital items that our departments are not able to purchase, or we're having to, as you've seen with some of the budget amendments, uh, that we're having to come back and ask for more funds from, and especially with projects that we're dealing with. A great example is City Hall Elevator Project, several water sewer projects. So, things are costing a lot more money, and so, as we go through this budget process, we've really got to look to see where things are, and go from there.
And we all know, I mean, the city has to pay the same inflation rate as everybody else. I mean, Charlie just reported not too long ago that he used to pay nine hundred dollars for transformer, now he's paying nine thousand dollars for a transformer. You know, there's, there's, the cost of his wire, I think he's told us, me at one time, had quadrupled in price. Now, the price of the diesel fuel that we used to pay three years ago is, is up quite a bit. I don't know how much, but everything's up, uh, except for the employee salaries. And we, we need to, we need to keep our employees, we've got some of, we've got the best employees that money can buy, but it's not enough money because they're leaving us and they're going to other places. And we need, yeah, I would love to see our salary where Charlie could hire a first-class lineman from one of these contractors down the road, or our salaries where he could hire a first-class lineman from the, I don't know, is it the City of Kinston? Are they electric cities, you know, from over there or something? We need to start hiring first-class linemen and first-class police officers and, and first-class firefighters from some other cities, instead of them taking them all away from us.
You said that, um, you would look at the date, we could look at the date either July or December. Why not just July? Why, um, can we not just set the date? Again, is that due to all?
That, that would be a board decision to look at as we go through the budget process. And we will have several workshops as we go through this, and we'll see actually what our financial picture looks like over the next few months.
Alderman Prill?
A couple of questions. I mean, I think I know the answers to them, but I think it's worth asking. And really following up on Alderman Astor's, uh, question, or his recommendation that the board look at full implementation. Full implementation, um, being the sixty-six percent increase effective essentially immediately, um, and the balance, um, effective as a, like, effective as of, say, July one of next year. Are there any statutory restrictions that would prevent us from taking official action tonight to implement that recommendation? Since we're dealing with two different budget cycles?
That, yes, sir. I, I think, um, expressing that as a, a goal and objective is fine. I think trying to, to bind yourself into a fixed number for next year's budget is going to get you, um, in a jam. But certainly, I think.
Say that again, Scott.
I, I think try, trying to tie yourself now into a budget decision that's going to be effective July one, without having any financial data before you regarding next year's budget, could get you in a jam. I think, I think expressing that goal and objective, uh, is certainly appropriate, if that's how the board feels. But trying to mandate now a dollar amount in next year's budget.
So, we can do it as a target date, though, correct?
Absolutely, yes. And what I'm hearing, sitting here, is that feels like a goal and objective. From the few voices I've heard on the board, I feel like that is where the board is looking for. What the city manager is telling you is, there's a whole lot of moving parts between now and then that you have to adjust. But I think the goal and objective may well be to accomplish that July one, rather than later next year. Is that, is that fair?
That was a good question. I didn't think about it.
Well, yeah, that, that addresses, uh, my question, and, and I think pretty much answered my second question, that being that if the board were to take official action tonight, based on Alderman Astor's recommendation, um, could the second half of that be reversed by this board at a future date prior to?
Ooh.
But, now, having said that, or having asked that question, um, I think you addressed it in that your recommendation to us would be not to take official action on both pieces of that, the sixty-six percent and the balance, as of July one. Take action on the first part of it with a recommendation or a, a statement, a goal that we, or an intention that we intend to implement the second part of it, um, but we're not taking any official action tonight on that second portion of it. So, I think you addressed.
Yes, sir.
Both questions, um, in, in your answer. So, I mean, I, I, I'm comfortable. I don't know if the, the board has any, any further, um, questions or comments. Um, I'm comfortable with, uh, the recommendation that Alderman Astor has suggested, uh, with the caveat that we take official action tonight, based on staff's recommendation, um, on the sixty-six percent, or two-thirds, uh, implementation, effective with the first pay period in January, and that the board make a commitment. And that's all it is. It's just, it's a goal. It's a commitment, it's an intent, that the second part of that implementation would be effective as of July one, with the understanding that between now and then, hopefully, nothing out of the ordinary comes up, the numbers look good, uh, at the time that we're working with the budget, and that we can fully implement that by official action at that point in time.
Yeah. And I'll second that. I'll get on board with that, as long as we schedule the second portion of it as a target date of July first.
Or, or whatever pay period makes.
Yeah.
Sense.
The FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yes.
Implementation.
So, want to be clear, did I hear a motion and a second?
You did.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Might have a roll call on the motion on the floor, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor? Alderman Dest?
Before I make my motion, um, can I say this? Do the employees really understand what we just all about to agree to?
And we disagree.
So, Foster, could you, we're in, what we're about to vote on right now is to implement the first stage of this, which is a one-point-two million dollars, correct?
That's correct, for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay. Which will be effective for the employees for their January one?
It would actually be effective with the December twenty-first pay period, with, with getting, basically paying for that January thirteenth.
Okay. Of course, of course, I say yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries.
I make a motion, we take five-minute recess. Can we do that?
Do we have a second? A second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in a recess. We're in a recess. All right. We are now back in session. I want to procedurally clean up, uh, this last motion. I believe, uh, as, as the administrator of this meeting, I believe that the intent of the motion for number sixteen, um, was to adopt the recommendations by staff that is presented in number sixteen with a caveat that we would look to make a further implementation in July of next year. So I don't know who, Madam Court, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Alderman Prue, is that the way you intended the motion to be?
Yeah, well, I, I, again, I, not to get into semantics, but, uh, I guess getting, trying to get the board to commit, you know, an intent to, uh, move forward with the second, uh, increase as a, as of July one or thereabouts. Now, whether that needs a second motion or.
You good, Mr. Turney? Are you? Did you make the second? Alderman, I made the second.
Yes, I made the second.
Alderman Astor.
So it's sixty-six percent of the consultant's recommendation, that is the very next pay period, I reckon it is, or July or January.
And, and amending the classification pay plan, we need to make sure that's, that's the part that's.
That was part of the motion that was going number sixteen.
Yes.
But, uh, but it's sixty-six percent of the recommended salary from the consultant and.
That's correct.
And with the target date of July first for the rest of it, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
That's what it.
So that's clear on your motion, you're good with the second. Does the board fully understand that's what we voted on?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Turney, are you good?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, moving on to item number seventeen, we need to adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendment for FY twenty-two, twenty-three to provide for the amendment to the classification pay plan that we just voted on in number sixteen.
I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to make this presentation.
In correlation with the amended classification pay plan that was just presented, this budget amendment allocates funds for the increased cost of salaries and benefits for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Pay increases were calculated and positions that were adjusted by one or more pay grades. If the newly calculated salary did not meet the minimum of the respective pay grade, then the salary was brought to the minimum of that pay grade. Additionally, the two positions that were downgraded received a one percent bonus. Fund balance was appropriated as follows to provide for the increased costs, with seven-hundred-sixty-six-thousand-nineteen dollars from general fund, eighty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars from the water fund, seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine dollars from the sewer fund, two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars from the electric fund, and three-thousand-four-ninety-nine, ah, four-hundred-ninety-four dollars from the MPO grant, plan grant fund, and thirteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars from the solid waste fund totaling one-million-one-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
So I got a question. We, we've got two employees, and God forbid, I don't know who they are and don't want to know, that's being overpaid according to the salary survey, correct?
Based, based on the job description, that's correct.
So why are we giving them a bonus if they're being overpaid?
It, it only made sense that they, you know, they would be the only two employees out of four-hundred-sixty, outside, the city manager's not included in this, but they would be the only two employees that would not get something. And so that, a- as we talked about this, about, well, at least they need to get something out of this.
Most pleasure, Board, on item number seventeen.
Make a motion that we adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendment to FY twenty-two, twenty-three to provide for amendment of the classification pay plan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prue?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number eighteen, consider adopting a budget resolution author, I'm sorry, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order for the City Hall Elevator Project to include a fire alarm system. Mr. Hughes.
This time I'd like to ask Mr. Childs to come make this presentation.
Good evening, Board. What you have before you is, uh, a change order for a request that became present when, once the contract was led and went to permitting, and during the permitting process, it was identified that the existing system of the historic section of City Hall would need to be tied to the new annex section. So, once that was identified, they went through the process of how to tie them together. And what was discovered at that time was that we had got an antiquated system technology-wise in this portion of the building, which would not tie to the new annex. So it was necessary to facilitate having coverage in this building as required by the Fire Code to add this section to install these new alarm systems or features to tie the systems together.
George, is it going to be a wireless system?
Uh, no, no.
I got the wire in.
But they did, they did work between our, um, our fire, our fire group and the architects to try to maintain the historical integrity of this building as to the required placement of those alarms.
So what about burg, burg, burglar alarm system?
This has just got to do with the fire system. Now, in this process, they are going to, since we identified that they're going to have to run some additional chases in the annex, um, we saw the opportunity to run some of the chases for some additional security and camera setups on the annex, but that will be done outside of this contract, either in-house with Bullock Works employees or outside vendors that currently service that, that equipment.
George, who, who pulled the permits for this project? Did the G C pull the permits?
Yes, well, yeah, they submit the permits, yes.
So, a- am I missing something that it would be this late in the game for it to be determined that we've had to make this change?
Well, from my conversations with both the architect and the fire marshal, when you get into tie-ins between existing structures, uh, where the requirements are, and there's a little bit of, you know, vagueness in interpretation of how you read that. So, um, it came to the agreement that this was necessary by Fire, Fire Code, and we, we moved forward to implement that. And it does take, it does take some time to get the architect through the plan set, um, working with, with the fire marshal to figure out where we need them, and then get them to the contractor to go out to the subs to get pricing.
Board have any questions?
Make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order for the City Hall Elevator Project to include a fire alarm system.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
I think Alderman Brinson beat you to it. Um, I do have, I do have one more question. It's okay. Uh, well, let me ask this, Kim, Kim may know, I hate putting her on the spot, but did we have contingency build into this project?
Uh, no. When we trin, when we, um, we were thinking about doing that, but when you transfer those funds over to the project fund, you cannot get them back to the general fund. So we were going to do that as the change orders arrived.
Did the architect submit a contingency in their plans? Contingency number?
He did, he did. And it was close to three-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, any more discussion? All right. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prue?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Item number nineteen, consider adopting an ordinance amendment to the City Hall Elevator Project Fund.
Ms. Ostrom will make this presentation.
In conjunction with the previous item, this budget ordinance amends the City Hall Elevator Project Fund by seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-nine dollars, the cost of the fire, for the cost of the fire alarm, uh, monitoring system. Funds will be appropriated from the general fund fund balance.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment for the City Hall Elevator Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prue.
Alderman Prue?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to make this presentation.
As the final step to provide funding for the fire alarm system in the elevator, this amendment will appropriate seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-nine dollars from general fund fund balance. The amendment also appropriates one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eight dollars from general fund fund balance for the appointing of the city hall and make appropriations to cover enclosures for outstanding purchase orders as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two that have been rolled forward. Lastly, it makes transfer, transfers from the water and sewer funds, fund balances to cover phase three of the Township seven sewer improvement project, improvements project.
Board have questions? Not an entertaining motion for item number twenty.
I make a motion that we adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendment for FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prue?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-one, consider adopting a resolution awarding Contract One for the Township number seven sewer improvement phase three project. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Hughes to come up and discuss these projects.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Actually, the next two items you have, twenty-one and twenty-two, are both related to the Township seven sewer improvements phase three project. Th- this is a very large-scale sewer improvements project we've been working on for over a decade in several phases to ultimately, uh, ensure we have enough transmission capacity to move all the wastewater from the east side of, of the Trent River, across the Trent River, and into Main New Bern into our treatment plant. This is the final step in the process. Uh, it's a very large, very complex project, so we split it into two separate contracts, uh, trying to encourage more bidders and more participation, hopefully get it done quicker with two separate contracts. So we bid the project, uh, on November fourth. We only had two bidders show up for each contract, kind of shows you the strain we're starting to see regionally on our construction resource. I think that will continue to actually get worse as, as time rolls on over the next year or so. However, we did have a couple of good contractors that submitted low bids. For Contract One, we had James L. Cape and Associates, who we've worked with fairly regularly, they're based out of New Bern. They've done a number of very successful projects, uh, throughout New Bern over the last two or three decades, very confident in their ability to carry out their portion of the project. And Contract Two, uh, low bid was Peters and White. Uh, it's a heavy industrial construction company based out of Virginia, did a lot of follow-up research, um, talked a lot of references after the bid, and they come highly recommended for the type of work they bid. I felt we've got a pretty good team in the two contractors, and I think we're ready to move forward with the award of the contracts. I felt we've got a pretty good team in the two contractors and I think we're ready to move forward, uh, with the award of the contracts tonight. Uh, we'll be ready to get everybody in gear for the first of the year. Hopefully start getting some contractors and materials down here in early twenty-three and, and would love to see the construction started, uh, by the end of the first quarter of twenty-three. Do you have to answer any questions on either one of those?
Board have questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we-
Real quick, um, is-
Our assistant attorney is here.
Can, can we combine twenty-one and twenty-two together?
I would do them separately, Mayor.
Okay. All right, Alderman Astor.
So, um, I'd like to con- uh, adopt a resolution awarding the contract one for the Township Number Seven Sewer Improvement Phase Three Project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on item number twenty-one, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Okay, item number twenty-two.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution awarding contract two for the Township Number Seven Sewer Improvement Phase Three Project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on item number twenty-two, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-three, consider adopting an ordinance to amend the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project Fund.
Ms. Ostrom will present this item.
The Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project Fund will be amended by six million one hundred six thousand dollars, one hundred six thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars for phase three of the project. Construction costs within this, will initially be covered by a transfer of four million eight hundred sixteen-nine thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars from the sewer fund. Financing options will be reviewed with the intent of reimbursed, reimbursing the sewer fund. Additionally, one million two hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars will be transferred from the water fund to complete work on water lines in the same area. The water fund will not be reimbursed for this transfer. Also, the total project thus far also includes five hundred thousand dollars from Golden Lake Grant Funds, which was previously received.
Board have questions on item number twenty-three?
No, sir, but I'd make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to amend the Town, Township Seven Sewer Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on item number twenty-three, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-four, consider adopting a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project. Got to love government, don't you?
Ms. Ostrom will present this item.
This item relates to the previous items for the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project. As required by IRS regulations, a declaration of intent to reimburse must be adopted prior to or within sixty days of payment of expenditures that will be reimbursed through financing proceeds.
Board have questions?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the declaration of intent to reimburse the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Preel.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-five, consider adopting a resolution in support of N C D O T reducing the speed limit on N C forty-three between State Road fourteen eighty-three Briarwood Lane and the point one oh one mile marker north of State Road fourteen eighty-one Gracie Farms Road. Mr. Hughes.
This time I'd like to ask Mr. Childs to make this presentation.
Uh, yes, this is a, uh, resolution of support for D O T in reducing its speed limit from fifty-five to fifty miles an hour on the section of forty-three between Briarwood and Gracie Farms. Um, this had come before the board on a previous date and it was requested to be tabled by Alderman Best so we could go back to D O T to see if they would consider a further reduction to forty-five miles an hour. D O T responded that they, they did complete their evaluation and did not have the evaluation show that it needed a forty-five mile an hour speed limit and they were going to hold to the request of our support for a reduction to just fifty miles an hour. The follow-up from D O T is included in the packet.
Board have questions?
Public Works recommends that we do, we do this reduction in concurrence on their highway.
Okay, this board have questions?
If there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I really wish that the speed limit could have been lowered to forty-five, but I'm not going to, um, stop progress because that is a busy highway and any reduction in the speed limit is, is needed there. Um, so I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of N C Department of Transportation reducing the speed limit on N C forty-three between S R fourteen eighty-three Briarwood Lane and, uh, point one oh one mile mark north of S R fourteen eighty-one Gracie Farms Road.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-six, consider adopting a resolution approving a bill of sale for the Tisdale House and special warranty deed for tax parcel ID eight zero one one two seven zero zero zero, which is also known as thirteen eleven Rim Avenue. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, the city attorney will discuss this item.
Mayor, members of the board, um, this matters before you, um, in that it is, it is quite unusual. Um, typically, when the board, um, approves, uh, an offer of purchase to sell property, um, the closing takes place thereafter. Um, this one is a bit unique in that we are adding, you may recall, various duties, obligations and preservation requirements to not only the Rim Avenue Lot, but the Tisdale House itself. So, because the, the deed and the bill of sale are unique and non-staggered, I wanted that to be on the agenda, not only for you to see, but for the public to see, so that you could reflect on those provisions in the deed and bill of sale. We do a bill of sale for the Tisdale House itself. Once a structure is removed from its foundation, it becomes personal property, no longer real property. In this case, we are selling the real property, the Rim Avenue Lot, for forty-five thousand dollars. The Tisdale House, when it becomes personal property, will be transferred through a bill of sale at a price of thirty-five hundred dollars. That gets us to the forty-eight thousand five hundred dollar total purchase price. Both the special warranty deed and the bill of sale contain obligations for the Preservation Foundation to move the Tisdale House over to the Rim Avenue Lot, cause it to be pres- restored and preserved. And thereafter, all subsequent owners will be bound by those covenants to keep and maintain it in its historic condition. So, because that is unique, I wanted that on the agenda so that everyone is aware of it and this resolution simply authorizes the mayor to sign both that deed and bill of sale.
This board have questions?
Foster, did you have a chance to check with the, the Preservation Foundation as to whether they've made a decision on who is going to be awarded the house or are they still reviewing proposals?
Yes, I spoke with a representative today. They have made a decision and they are planning on doing a formal analysis on who, who that person will be. So, yes, sir.
And Alderman Preel's question reminded me too, that of course, the Preservation Foundation has reviewed and approved these documents, so no curveballs to them.
My pleasure, the board, on item number twenty-six.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving the bill of sale for the Tisdale House and special warranty deed for tax parcel ID eight dash zero one one dash two seven zero zero zero, thirteen eleven Rim Avenue.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-seven, consider adopting a resolution approving the general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, N C, Marie Brown and the City of New Bern for two thousand seven Pearson Street. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, the city approved the conveyance of this property to Habitat for the purpose of developing affordable housing for low and moderate income families. Habitat has subsequently constructed a home on property and intends to transfer the home to a buyer. By executing the deed to transfer ownership to the buyer, the city will release any rights retained under a transfer and reversion agreement between the city and Habitat.
This board have questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, North Carolina, Marie Brown and the City of New Bern for two thousand seven Pearson Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight, I do not see any appointments in the agenda. Does anyone have one that I missed? All right, we'll move on to item number twenty-nine, attorney's report.
Nothing reported, Mayor.
Item number thirty, city manager's report.
Three things to, to discuss. First, I, I'm pleased to announce that we have named George Childs as our new director of public works. George has been with the city for several years and he has filled in as an interim on two different occasions and we're, we're excited to have George in that role. And George, if you would come up, I'd like to say a few words.
Nothing like being put on the spot, huh, George?
It's not like I haven't been up here a few times before in the past. No, I, I certainly appreciate the opportunity that's been afforded me by the city and it has been nothing but enjoyable working with this, the, all the department heads and every day-to-day employee that I work with. Um, I certainly hope to, you know, look going forward, be a part of our future growth, which we're, we're having come. And also to protect what assets that do make our city survivable. And also work on our, our resiliency to sometimes of our unsettled weather that comes in every summer. So, you know, I th- I think our, our future growth is really where, where I'm, I'm excited to be a part of and I'm certainly glad to have that opportunity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, George.
And Mayor, I sent something to the board a few weeks ago, but I'm also pleased to announce that we have hired a new director of development services. Her name is Jessica Ru. She is currently the director of, of planning and, uh, development in Anzlo County. She will be joining us on January third. We look forward to having her come and we'll introduce, uh, her to the board at the first meeting in January. So excited to have that. Also, since this is the last meeting of the year, we do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and the next thing that comes with that is Happy New Year. And so we do have our New Year's Eve block party, which will be right outside City Hall at the intersection of Craven and Pollock. We've got a lot of great events scheduled, a lot of, uh, strolling entertainers. Crush is the band. We'll also have a DJ out here. We have a new sponsor this year, the Riverside Automotive Group is our sponsor and we look forward to having a good time. Activities will begin at five thirty P M. and we'll wind up just a little bit after midnight. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, moving on to new business, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Mayor Odom, I'd like to, uh, remind the board, our last, uh, closed session when we did, uh, Foster's evaluation, we discussed, uh, his salary and, uh, compensation. And so, uh, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we award him twelve thousand dollars for a bonus. I guess that's it.
All right, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second on the motion, any discussion?
The, um, discussion really is why we are doing that and, uh, the reasons is, you know, we hired Foster at a very challenging time, uh, transition between boards and, uh, probably some difficult guidance, you know, or lack thereof, uh, to navigate the city through when we were going through our transition. And then also, uh, managing day-to-day operations, missing three, uh, department heads, uh, division heads. And so, uh, we decided, or we discussed, um, a bonus versus a salary increase for those reasons.
All right, um, let's do a roll call, just to be safe on this one. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson, and this is to authorize payment, uh, one-time bonus to city manager for performance the current fiscal year of twelve thousand dollars.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. And a couple of things, I'd, I'd like to publicly thank, uh, public works under George Childs and the Stormwater Division under Avery Smith for recently working in Kings Row on their drainage issues. Uh, thank you very much for responding to citizens' concerns. I also want to thank the, uh, New Bern Historical Society and Carol Beckton for the great presentations and the vigil held, uh, last week for the hundredth anniversary of the nineteen twenty-two New Bern Fire. Uh, they were very informative and we as citizens need to know more of our city's history because where the city goes in the future needs to be informed by where we've been. Uh, I also want to thank Parks and Rec, uh, led by Kerry Green Warren for the successful tree lighting ceremony and the Union Point Park decorations and the Christmas flotilla and the hugely successful ice skating rink. We're doing well in that point. And I don't know how, like we talked about earlier, I don't know how Parks and Rec gets it all done with, with what they have and, uh, but they do a great job and want to thank them. Uh, I was able to attend the swearing-in ceremonies for the new members of the Craven County School Board and the Craven County Board of Commissioners. I want to congratulate all the newly elected officials of those boards and I'm sure, uh, just as I am, this board of Alderman looks forward to working with those boards as best we can. The only other announcement I have is Rees Across America. Uh, they will be, the Rees will be arriving, uh, at the cemetery by eight thirty. They're going to be escorted at eight A M. from the Clark's Road Rest Area. And at eight thirty, they'll arrive at National Cemetery. Anyone wanting to help with unloading is welcome, but please do not park inside the cemetery because the semi has to make it in there. Uh, Rees Across America Day is Saturday, December seventeenth. Of course, the city Parks and Rec will provide buses from Ruth Chapel, which is at the corner of, uh, Simmons Street and Oaks Road to the cemetery. And buses will start at eleven A M. And then the ceremony starts at twelve noon. Please be advised, there's very little parking around the cemetery. Uh, please use the city shuttles, but if you're planning on parking around the cemetery, please arrive early. And then following the Rees ceremony and laying of Rees, uh, they will be moving over to Greenwood Cemetery where we're going to lay sixty-three Rees in Greenwood Cemetery. Just for scale, there's five thousand Rees we're going to lay in National. So, um, there are very limited number of Rees at Greenwood, but if you wish to do that, we will do that immediately following. Uh, there will not be a separate ceremony at Greenwood. Uh, there's only one ceremony because we're only one city. And then since this is our last board meeting of the year, I want to wish the board, our city staff and citizens a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, with our new, uh, division chief hires and approval of an employee pay increase, I'm optimistic in this coming year we as a city can make progress in filling positions and maintaining New Bern as a great place to live, work and play and develop a master plan and future growth, both residential and commercial. And so, for all of those reasons, I look forward to twenty twenty-three with great anticipation.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Best?
Um, just want to say Merry Christmas to the board and to, um, staff. I wish I'd have thought about saying, um, thanking all of the employees, with some of the employees that was here tonight. Um, we couldn't do it without them. It's been a long year and I know a lot of, um, employees are, were very thankful. They contacted me about their gift card, um, that we, um, so this board so generously allowed to be given to our employees. Um, so they're really grateful for that. But I do have a, um, um, a issue with, um, Mayor Odom and, um, city manager Foster Hughes. It's Christmas time and I don't even see a candy cane up here for us board members.
You didn't get a gift?
I don't even see a fun setter. Uh, even a card that said, "Better luck next year."
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize.
But, um, overall, it's just, that was for the humor of it all. We, um, I just thank each and every one of you. We have made a lot of decisions here for our citizens, for our employees, and I just thank each and every one of you and just let us continue to work together for the betterment of our city and our, our, overall, our employees, which make our city what it is and for our citizens and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Alderman Astor?
Yes. First, I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please stay safe. And I would also like to mention, my heart goes out tonight to the family of the young man that was the, I believe, a junior at West Craven High School that was killed on December the eleventh, tragic accident. And I, I just, you know, my, you know, my heart goes out to the family. Thanks, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Honorable Astro. Alderman Royal?
I echo the sentiments. Merry Christmas to all. Thank you so much for your work, your patience, your time, the investment. The journey ahead is a journey, but I say it over and over again, together we win.
Thank you. Alderman Pril?
Just a comment, that it's been an interesting four months so far and I'm looking forward to the next three years.
Yes, ma'am. I do have another comment. I just want, well, statement rather, I do want to say thank you. I had gotten with City Manager Hughes, oh, last year sometime. And I really do thank you for implementing the, bringing back the Employee of the Year. And we definitely have to continue with the Employee of the Year. And having the luncheon that I, I felt was, overall, was a very large turnout by our employees. They seemed like they enjoyed it. I met a lot of employees that, you know, I, I don't think I would ever have meet, would have ever met them if we did not have that luncheon. So, it was, overall, it was very good. The food was delicious. I even took some chicken home and barbecued for my husband because there was so much food left. And it was most enjoyable. So, let's continue, if we can continue on that same route, I, I think our employees will appreciate it. At least it lets them know that we are thinking about them and we appreciate them. And it's just, sometimes it's the little things that count.
Okay. I have just a couple of things. I was able to, I was invited to speak to the Chamber Committee Board this morning. They've done that a, a couple of times since I've been in this position and kind of give them an update on things taking place throughout the city. Good group of folks, they were, it was the last meeting of the current chair. And they were talking about an event coming up this Friday night. I normally don't use this as an advertising segment, but I, I wanted to just mention that Friday night, that the Chamber is sponsoring an event. It's called Christmas with the Embers. It's going to be at the Doubletree Hotel. I mentioned this for a couple of reasons. I, I've been to this event in Greenville, I think, for the last either two or three years. It's very entertaining, it's very family-friendly. It's not just beach music, the Embers, that's their genre, but they do a very good job with the Christmas music. So, the doors open at six, show starts at seven, you can get your tickets online. And I, I really wanted to mention that because the Doubletree Hotel, for many years, had been owned by an out-of-town entity and entities, I should say, that I think it's safe to say they weren't very invested in the city of New Bern. Doubletree has been purchased by a local investor, Mr. John Harrelson. And I want to make sure that the, the public understands now that the Doubletree is owned by someone local, which I think is a, a great thing. He is working on plans for the Annex, which is the building next door that has been vacant since Florence. That's going to become a separate hotel and we all know the hotel needs that we have in the city. So, I just wanted to give kudos to him for reaching out and doing something a little bit different with that event. So, if you don't have anything going on Friday night, I encourage you to do so. The next item is our ethics training. The clerk reminded me today, we have been offered by the Eastern Carolina Council of Government. There's so many acronyms these days, it's hard to keep them straight. They have offered to conduct this training, they are conducting this training, they've offered for anyone to participate if we want to at no charge. However, we are not members of the COG, so keep in mind, that might be obligating us or we might feel somewhat obligated if we did that. The clerk, we've already paid for the on-demand training through the UNC School of Government. I think we had had some discussion about wanting to do that as a group, so if we had questions, we could hit pause, we could have that conversation back and forth. We still need to get that scheduled. As an alternative to that, I believe the link could be shared with everyone and at our own pleasure. You could take the training on your own, check that box off and we can move on. So, does anybody have any comments on whether or not we want to try to schedule that meeting now? Or would the majority of the board prefer to do that individually?
I have a question. If we, instead of doing it individually, is it something where we can maybe have it set up as a Zoom and do it? I know, I think all the-
It, it is a Zoom?
It is a Zoom.
But are you saying that we would all be remote?
Right.
And do it that way?
It's going to require notices because it will be a public meeting.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a meeting, which the public would be invited to. If they wanted to watch, they could certainly do so.
It might present some challenges to get the notices out and do that. The challenges, the challenges may, may be greater than, than the end result.
I would, because everybody's scheduled, especially this time of year, I'd prefer just to have the links sent to us, let me do it individually.
And I'm assuming if no more than three wanted to get together and do it as a group, they could certainly do that?
Yes, sir, that's true.
So, you're individual, I would prefer doing it individually because I've done it before.
Only reason why I ask because I know it was stated when we first talked about the ethics training. I think a couple of board members were saying something about getting together collectively as a group and doing it, but-
It was going to be part of the work session.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there a timeframe on this?
We do have a deadline. When is it, Ms. Clerk? That it's got to be completed?
You have twelve months from the election.
How, and how long does the course actually last? A couple of hours?
Two hours.
If you want to wait till after holidays, we can revisit first month of January if you'd like.
I'm fine doing it by myself.
Okay.
I'm fine with by myself too, it doesn't matter.
So, if, if the clerk would send the link out to everyone individually and then if there's a few folks that want to get together, no more than three, we can host that at City Hall and do it that way. Last thing I'll say, I've, I've probably said enough about the football game Friday night, but I'm going to say a couple of more things. It was a tremendous game. I don't really think folks really understand the impact of this community. I drove up from Columbia, South Carolina, my wife and son rode with some friends. And I was sitting in the audience with Sharon Bryant and we kept turning around and looking and it was just droves of people kept coming in, one after the other. My wife texted me, they were stuck in traffic. I don't think Chapel Hill Scott, I don't think our Tar Hills were anticipating the New Bern Bears showing up the way we did. But, you know, looking at the audience, how everybody came together and, and drove two and a half hours to get there was great. I knew Alderman Brinson was there.
We had twice as many people.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, it was really great. And, you know, the commitment that those young men made to, it wasn't, we talked about it today at lunch, it wasn't just playing football. I mean, it, it takes a commitment to do that and we are extremely proud of them. We definitely love Coach Now, we don't want him going anywhere, so I hope he stays here for a very long time. So, and Merry Christmas to everyone and that's all I got. So, I think we, do we need a closed session?
Mayor members of the board, my apologies, I do need you in a closed session. I will be very brief. I put the one forty-three thirteen eleven eight-three to maintain our turn, Connie Covich, and you can probably keep your seats and I can get you in and out a lot quicker.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So have I.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are in closed session.